Please leave all cell phones off or on vibrate. Please remain standing for a prayer and a pledge to the flag.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Joseph Stotts to lead our prayer.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day. We thank you so much for all those that are gathered here today together. We ask that you'll help us to make decisions that are best for the county. You'll help us to always set aside personal opinion. You'll help us to set aside divisiveness. And that you will help us to set aside all those things that would interfere with us making the best decision for the community and the county as a whole. We're blessed to be able to serve the county as commissioners, and we're blessed to be able to have all those that are gathered here with us tonight that work every day in emergency services, law enforcement, EMS, and all those that serve the county. We're blessed to have them. We're blessed for the work that they do. And we're also very thankful for the work that you put upon us. We're blessed to have work, have work to do. And again, we're just thankful to be here, and we pray you'll be with us during this meeting, help us to make the best decisions that we can. In Christ's name, we humbly pray. Amen.
Thank you. If you would, please remain standing as we prepare for the pledge of allegiance.
All right. We've asked Chief Raimy Roberts, Raymond Roberts up here, to lead our pledge tonight. Raimy was joined the North Warren Fire Department in March of 1997. He was promoted to captain in 2009 and appointed chief in 2014. He's a current resident of the Warren County Fire Chiefs Association, or president, I'm sorry. He's been a medical first responder for 18 years. He was elected constable in the 11th district in 2014 and serviced until moving from the district. And he recently took over the Wayside Community Center with hopes of reviving the center for the community. He was born and raised in Warren County and proud to be able to volunteer for our community. Thank you, Raymond, for your service. If you would, lead our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the full ally of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Lisa Caldero, please.
Michael Bell.
Here.
Carl D. Bolden.
Here.
Carl E. Bolden.
Here.
Carleen Brown.
Here.
David Dunlap.
Here.
Randy England.
Here.
Deborah Evans.
Here.
Steve Glenn.
Here.
Stephen Hilton.
Here.
Robert Hennessy.
Here.
Brad Hillis.
Here.
Ron Lee.
Here.
Gary Martin.
Here.
Daniel Owens.
Here.
Casey Owens.
Here.
Gary Prater.
Kristy Ross.
Here.
Scott Ruble.
Here.
Tommy Savage.
Here.
Tyrone Spartman.
Here.
Joseph Stotts.
Here.
Philip Stout.
Here.
Cole Taylor.
Here.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Here.
Twenty-three present.
Twenty-three present. Next, I would entertain a motion to adopt the docket. A motion from Commissioner Spartman, a second from Commissioner Stotts. Anyone want to speak to that motion?
Chairman.
Commissioner Hilton.
I'd like to amend the docket. I'd like to make a motion to amend the docket to add in at 8A, discussion of the COVID policy.
I have a motion to amend the docket with Section 8A COVID-19 policy.
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Ruble. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, back on to the original motion to approve the docket. Anyone want to speak to that motion? All right. If all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, I would entertain a motion to read the minutes. We have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes. Do you want to motion to approve them as written? Also, thank you, Commissioner Stotts. Second by Commissioner Spartman. Anyone want to speak to that? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next is public comment. I don't know of any either. All right. Next is employee recognition. Executive Haley.
We always try to pick someone from various departments to recognize for the outstanding service that they do for the county. And as we know, without county employees, we couldn't do the job that we do and get the services provided. And so, over the last two or three years, it's been hard, of course, on the Sheriff's Department, that even despite COVID, we've excelled and received certification, and our employees in the Sheriff's Department have gone the extra mile. And one of those officers I would like to recognize tonight, she's worked for the Sheriff's Department for 19 years and eight years as a court officer, and she's in this building several days a week. And when she's not here, she's at the courthouse, providing safety and security, not only for the courthouse and the staff and the judicial system, employees and judges there, but also for the employees here. So, tonight, I would like to recognize Court Officer Yvonne McGinnis with an appreciation for her service, so.
Thank you all. It's a blessing to work at the Sheriff's Department. Thank you all.
All right. This time, we'll go directly into elected officials, department reports. County Executive Haley.
I think you all got emailed a copy of my report or a printed report, a couple of things to add to that. We will be hosting a breakfast for county employees on December 17th, and I'll get you the details whether we're going to have to actually have a sit-down breakfast, or it'll be carryout again. So, I'm working with the school system to provide that with Ms. Fay Taylor, who's Director of Food Services. We still have not received the final rule on the ARP money. Several of you have asked me about that, and so there'll be more webinars this week. And we've been one a week that Mr. Cotton and myself and Lauren have been watching, plus the updates from C-TAS. So, we're still waiting on not only just the ARP, but also the TDEC ARP. And as you know, the infrastructure bill passed Congress, and so we're still waiting to see how that money's going to filter down and through what agencies, whether it's going to come directly through TDOT or through various state agencies, and whether it'll be a direct pass-through to the counties, or there'll be a process for applying for those. There will be an RPO meeting in Cookeville on Wednesday, and that's the Rural Planning Office, where TDOT, the Regional Planning Commission, basically gets together and looks at TDOT projects. And so, Mr. Glenn and myself and several others from the city also sit on that. It's a regional from all 14 upper Cumberland Counties. We'll be attending the Rural Development Conference of the Governors this week, and so we'll be sharing back any information that we have about rural economic development. There was also a Main Street Visioning Session today, where we talked about full implementation of the countywide strategic plan. So, if there's any other questions, you can call my office.
Commissioner Stotts.
Yes, Executive Haley, I've got a couple of quick questions. The first one is, I noticed in your report, you said you were going to have a town hall. Is that still planned?
Yes, it is, but we're still waiting for the final rule. So, I've been meeting with utility districts and some of the other stakeholders, and so I've got input also from the county employees that we do have to have, and we're thinking about doing a joint one with the City of McMinnville, because we're all sharing some of the same ARP money.
Okay. Yeah, next question I got, going in different directions here. Apologize, I just went through your report. The next one is, the Crouch Motors property, UCHRA, and the discussion we had in the presentation, where are we at with all that right now?
We're still waiting for ARP approvals. So, if we're paying for that with ARP or Governor's Grant money, we'll have to decide which pot of money and what's best to be suited to actually fund that purchase. And so, we're still waiting on final rule from ARP in order to either qualify for that money or find an alternate source for purchase.
Okay. Then I just got one last question. Do you mind speaking to the continued use of an officer stationed at the front of this building? I've received numerous phone calls from people in the community that would like you to speak to the rationale on that. I was going to ask the sheriff if I feel like it's more appropriate to ask you. Maybe appropriate to ask him. If I need to do that, I can.
We had several incidences before COVID of people entering this building and having lockdowns and having to call the police, because every door was open. So, COVID actually opened up our eyes about the safety and security of our employees. We have millions of dollars that goes through the trustees' office during tax season. We have Ms. Scott's office collecting tens of thousands of dollars each day. With no officer present, anyone could walk into this building. There's no operating security cameras or security systems to protect our employees. So, at this particular point, it's a safety issue for our employees. The courthouse has it. We're an extension of the courthouse. We are a courthouse annex. And so, to me, the safety and security of our employees are paramount. And so, the Sheriff's Department has cooperated with that, and I think every person that works in this building appreciates. You can ask each and every one of them that we have an officer on duty for protection. We still get hostile people that come in. Ms. Scott has them weekly that threaten her office. If I have to wait to call a city officer or a county officer to this building, oftentimes, it's too late. I've had to actually have officers on duty, full day from threats made against our offices. So, this is the easiest and the simplest and most cooperative way to protect our employees. Thank you.
Motion to approve report.
A motion to approve the report from Commissioner Hilton, second from Commissioner Owens. Anyone want to speak to that? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next is Finance Director, Justin Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the court. You have my report. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them at this time.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Stout, second from Commissioner Glenn. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Next is Highway Department Superintendent Glenn.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the court, you have my report. If there's any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Well, a motion from Commissioner England, second from Commissioner Bell. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Carry on. Levy.
Here tonight, I'd like to recognize a former employee who passed away on October the 8th. He's been with us over 20 years. Really good employee, great employee, dependable, always on time, perfect attendance. And load operator, bush hog mower. He's mowed ain't no time how many years. And unfortunately, sickness got him. And he was just kind of like a family member to the Highway Department. Worked days and nights, on-call 24/7, worked through Christmas. You'd call Jimmy Beecham, and he'd be ready to come. Always positive and had a laugh you could hear 150 feet away. He was a good personality, hard worker. And he'd done a lot for the Highway Department and for the community. You just think, at hours at night, when y'all are asleep, he would be out working. Run a chainsaw, real safety. And just don't find him like that every day. And on behalf of the... Could the family please come forward? Some of the family members are here tonight. Please come forward. Come right on up here. And on behalf of myself and Highway and Bridge Committee, would y'all please stand, Highway and Bridge Committee? And they was very instrumental in getting this plat for y'all, too. And also, our coworkers on the back row, their all here support. Jimmy made an impact on all of our lives. And he was a good family man and a good father, and you'll have memories forever. And so, from all of us, sincerely, with humble hearts, we present this to you for his services to the Warren County Highway Department. He just loved to deer hunt and loved to turkey hunt, and I always let him off on those evenings coming around. And he was a simple man with a big heart and a hard worker. And thank y'all very much.
Next is the Sanitation Department Director Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the court. Quick update, we received our new roll-off truck about three and a half weeks ago. It is in service. It's doing a good job. Appreciate everybody's support for that truck. It was desperately needed. You should have a copy of my report. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them at this time.
We have a motion to approve Commissioner Stout, second from Commissioner Bell. Anyone want to speak to that motion? Yes, Commissioner Bell.
I have to say, the truck looks good, and it is being used, and the guy driving it will take care of it. He will not let that truck get dirty. It is, Big E is driving it, and it will stay shiny.
He's a good... We got a lot of good, excellent employees. We're blessed on that.
Yes, Commissioners.
Your two old trucks, are they surplus stout now?
Yes, they are sold, and the money is in the general fund, sanitation fund balance. I apologize.
Anyone else? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Josh. Next is the Warren County Sheriff's Department, third quarter report. Sheriff Myers.
Mr. Chairman, members of the court, you should have my report. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Move to approve.
A motion from Commissioner Lee, a second from Commissioner England. Anyone want to speak to that motion? Commissioner Stotts.
I've got a couple of questions. Sheriff Myers, could you give us a status as far as the jail counselor? And I know they've been hired, but are they working every day now? Kind of what they're doing? Just kind of give us an update on that, if you don't mind.
Our counselor is working four days a week, 40 hours, actually, and we've already started our assessments of all the inmates. So, all that is on track. She's been on staff, I think, two weeks to three weeks, I'm on.
I've just got one more question, if I could.
Yes, Commissioner Stotts.
Do you mind speaking to the inmate population rise and kind of just your perspective on the recent rise, the rationale behind that?
Recently, Commissioner Stotts, our numbers have been consistent for a while now. What brought our numbers up drastically was a few months back, we had a drug roundup where we brought in over 30 drug dealers in Warren County. So, that was a big jump, and a lot of them are still there. Before that, our numbers were below 200, which now I think we're at 240 still. So, staying right there, close.
All right. If no one else, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Sheriff Myers. Next, Warren County Schools Quarterly Report. Superintendent Swallows.
Good evening, Honorable Commissioners. Thanks for allowing me to update you. You have a copy of my report. I do want to call to your attention in that report. We got great news about September. About three of our schools received the top score that they could receive on growth. Bobby Ray Elementary, Centertown Elementary, and Debra Elementary were all classified as five-level schools. Very proud of that. In addition, Bobby Ray was recognized as a reward school in the state of Tennessee for being in the top 5% for achievement and growth. So, we always like to call out the good, and those are three schools that did very well. Our other schools did well. Our district was at a three, which means we are where we are supposed to be. I want to be at that five, but we're working on that, too. So, if you have any other questions, we'd be happy to answer those for you.
Motion to approve. Commissioner Bell, second from Commissioner Hilton. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next, we'll go into our committee reports. First is Budget Finance, Commissioner Scott Ruble.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Finance has nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Next is Building and Grounds, Commissioner Carl Bolden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, Building and Grounds has nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Economic and Agriculture Development, Carl D. Bolden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, we have nothing to report.
Next is Education Committee, Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to add to Dr. Swallows' report that there's a combined November and December school board meeting, and it's scheduled for December the 7th at Eastside. Is that correct? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Financial Management, Executive Haley.
We don't have anything to report, except we'll be scheduling, I think, a meeting to piggyback on with Budget and Finance here soon, so.
Thank you. Next, Health and Welfare. At this time, we don't have anything to report. Highway and Bridge, Commissioner England.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Give you just a quick report. They're about, they're all done with the mowing, and believe it or not, we're getting ready for snow. So, I hate to use the S-word, but anyway. And we're getting it, we got the, we got the sheds full of salt, and we've got some on standby, so we run low. But I'd like to do something else real quick, if you permit me, Mr. Chairman. It's not a lot of times we have our guys that works and our ladies, Angel and I, for their Highway Department, and I serve on that committee. But they're all back in the corner, and they came tonight for Mr. Jimmy. But them guys back there in the corner, when you guys are sleeping, and it's snowing, and it's icing, they're in the trucks going down the road, and could be in a ditch or could be whatever. And Mark and all these boys going around through there, let me tell you, they need to stand up, and you guys need to remember, when, that's how you get to school, and that's how you get to work, is because, right yonder, them 10 or 20, whatever's there. So, y'all stand up. Give them a round of applause.
Next is Legislative, Commissioner Carleen Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, we have nothing to report.
Thank you. Next, Policy and Personnel, Commissioner Hilton.
Thank you, Chairman. We did have a meeting regarding the COVID policy. What you're going to have before you, Commissioners, is two different policies. The big packet that is stapled together is the original proposal that come before the committee, and we will vote on this later. But if you look in that packet, you'll see that it is the Tennessee Department of Health's COVID regulations. I know that there was some concern last month about EMS and the Sheriff's Department as well, following their guidelines. If you'll flip on back to a couple of pages, you'll see that there is a healthcare personnel policy in there as well. This is all directly from the state. So, basically, what the committee did and the policy that is sitting before you there is, as the Tennessee Department of Health changes, that policy will change as well. And so, it's like ever-evolving, because, you know, COVID is ever-evolving. Now, in our committee, Commissioner Lee did make a proposal that 80 hours be added back in. I know we've had that discussion before. So, you'll see Proposal B. I passed that out. It's a one-page handout. The only difference between these two policies is that 80 hours that you're going to see on line item four. I know we'll have that debate and talk about that once we bring it up for discussion. But y'all can be looking over that, and we can discuss about that further.
Thank you. Next is Safety, Commissioner Ron Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, we have nothing to report.
County Corrections Partnership, Commissioner Stotts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met for the first time in a while to elect officers. We discussed the safety report that Sheriff Myers had provided. I think it was either Lauren or Sheriff Myers provided to me. They presented to the Safety Committee. We talked about that. The questions that we had were clarified, basically the questions that I asked him tonight, because there was no one there. So, I asked him those questions. He clarified those. Thank you. And no new meeting scheduled at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Redistricting Committee, Commissioner England.
Mr. Chairman, we are going to discuss this later on, but we've had some really good meetings, some good discussions, and we'll get into that here in just a few minutes.
Thank you. All right. This time, we'll go into new business. And being that I am presenting the first two resolutions, I will relinquish the chair to Commissioner Ruble.
Thank you, Chairman Wiltshire. And as Chairman Wiltshire said, he will be presenting the first two resolutions. Resolution number one is number 15-2021. Chairman Wiltshire.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, you should have the updated copy in your packet that was passed out earlier this evening and also emailed to you earlier in the week for review. Basically, on the sheltering of dogs, I will read the resolution, but you'll notice one main difference. We took out the area about crawl spaces. So, I will read this as it is now. Whereas, regulations which establish humane standards for the sheltering of dogs are important because they provide a clear and minimum standard of care, which in turn protects dogs from harm. And whereas, TCA anedated 5.1-120 authorizes and empowers counties to regulate dogs. And further, that TCA anedated 5.1-21 authorizes and empowers counties to establish monetary penalty
authorizes and empowers counties to establish monetary penalties for violation and rules and regulations established by counties and whereas establishing regulations for standards of sheltering of dogs inside Warren County, Tennessee is a substantial step towards increasing the quality of life for the dogs of Warren County. Now therefore be it resolved by the county legislative body of Warren County, Tennessee, meeting in regular sessions on this fifteenth day of November twenty twenty-one that section twenty, or section one, that Warren County, Tennessee establishes the following standards for the sheltering of dogs inside Warren County, Tennessee. Section two, that no dog shall be permitted outdoors while unsupervised for more than ten hours in a twenty-four hour period or during any inclement weather unless the dog has adequate shelter. Section three, for the purpose of this resolution, adequate shelter shall be defined as an enclosed shelter house with three sides, a roof, and a floor with appropriate bedding. For the purposes of this resolution, any shelter built from materials which degrade easily by the elements and/or carriers and crates designed for temporary transport shall not be considered adequate shelter. Further, any shelter with chain link flooring shall not be considered adequate shelter. An automobile shall not be considered adequate shelter and neither will the shade and/or coverage provided by an automobile. Section four, for the purposes of this resolution, inclement weather shall be defined as an outdoor temperature that is below thirty-two degrees Fahrenheit or an outdoor temperature that is above ninety degrees Fahrenheit. Further, this definition shall also include abnormal weather events such as severe hail, snow, wind, dust, or otherwise. Section five, that any violation of this resolution shall result in a fine of fifty dollars per occurrence. Section six, that this resolution shall be effective upon passage the welfare of the county requiring it. And we met on this last week in Health and Welfare and it passed four to zero and I so move.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Wiltshire, second by Commissioner Brown. Anyone want to speak to that motion? Commissioner Bell.
I have a question for Mr. Bratcher. This policy does not affect city residents. Does it not, what about the city of Centertown, Viola, and Morrison?
If this policy passes, it will extend to any area that is currently under the purview of the Animal Control Shelter. So.
Which covers the whole?
The whole county, except for the city of McMinnville. That's correct.
But would cover Morrison, the city of Morrison?
That's right.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Bell. Any more discussion? Well, I know this has been a controversial issue and I would think it would be in best interest of the commission to ask Ms. Scott to call the robe. If you would, call the robe, please, Ms. Lee.
Michael Bell?
No.
Carl D. Bolden?
No.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
No.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
No.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote?
Okay, that resolution passes nineteen to four. Okay, resolution two is resolution sixteen dash twenty twenty-one. Chairman Wiltshire.
Thank you, Chairman Ruble. This time, I will read this resolution. You'll notice two things have been removed. The extra cycle and the under-six-month-old sections have been taken out. Whereas, regulations which establish humane standards for the tethering of animals are important because they provide a clear and minimum standard of care and whereas TCA annotated five-one dash one-twenty authorizes and empowers counties to regulate dogs and further that TCA annotated five-one dash one-twenty-one authorizes and empowers counties to establish monetary penalties for violations of rules and regulations establishing, or established by counties and whereas establishing minimum rules for the tethering of dogs inside Warren County, Tennessee is a substantial step towards increasing the quality of life for the dogs of Warren County. Now therefore be it resolved by the county legislative body of Warren County, Tennessee, meeting in the regular sessions on this fifteenth day of November twenty twenty-one that section one, that Warren County, Tennessee establishes, establishes the following standards for tethering of dogs inside Warren County, Tennessee. Section two, that no dog shall be tethered unless the tether is attached to a properly fitted collar or harness. No logging chains or tow chains shall be used as tethers and no pinch, prong, or choke type collars shall be permitted. Section three, that all tethers shall have swivels on both the animal end and the, of the tether as well as the anchor end of the tether. Section four, that the area which is reachable by the tethered animal shall be free of all strangulation hazards. Section five, that the maximum weight of the tether shall not exceed twenty percent of the weight of the dog being tethered. That no tether shall be utilized with, which is under ten feet in length. That was section six. Section seven, that any violation of this resolution shall result in a fine of fifty dollars per occurrence. That this resolution shall become effective upon passage the welfare of the county requiring it. And I failed to mention that from a previous, previous meeting, we had increased the amount of the weight of the chain from ten percent to twenty percent. And this passed Health and Welfare Committee four to zero and I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Wiltshire is their second. I'm sorry, I missed it. Commissioner Ross, second. Any discussion? Commissioner Brown.
Thank you. We didn't make these comments regarding the very first one, but I think it might be important to say that in attending the review meeting on these resolutions, I witnessed both of our Animal Control Officers giving their opinions and their approval of the changes that were being made and every single section on, on both of these resolutions and were, and recommended that they be passed and felt, and stated, they have, felt that we have no problem with enforcing these. Our sheriff was contacted and said that he had reviewed them and did not have any issues that had not been addressed and was willing to support and enforce these and help every way, any way that he could when he would be contacted. Members of the staff, members of the society of support groups that are out there, were all very supportive of the changes that were being made. And I feel like that, oh, and Mr. Bratcher was there and consulted in the wording and changed some things too. So, what we have in front of you has gone through the checks and balances and the support is there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Is there any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Savage.
I was going to stay silent, but the, I hope that the Animal Control, and I think this will pass, but I hope that they realize that all those pictures that were plastered on the internet, those are not fifty-dollar-fine pictures. Those are hardcore criminal cases. And our Animal Control, if they run upon a case like that, they need to back off and let the real police come in because they're not equipped to handle something like that because they could really get hurt. And support groups will not be there to back them up then. And they're out there by theirself. So, I hope they use good common sense and will utilize our County Sheriff's Department on things like this. And I say this all respectfully to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Savage. Mr. Ed.
I'd like to address the points you brought up, Commissioner Savage. Those were addressed at the meeting that Ms. Commissioner Brown spoke of. This is a civil resolution and it was fully explained and understood at the meeting by the support groups, by the sheriff, by everyone there, that we have state laws for animal abuse that are criminal acts. That is when the sheriff and his department would be, definitely would be called in. I can state unequivocally that our Animal Control, County Animal Control and our City Animal Control will not try to, they already do not try to do those cases on their own and they won't. I can assure you of that.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioner Hilton.
I would like for, if, if Commissioner Wiltshire would, to clarify for the record, there's a lot of misunderstanding about these resolutions that people's got the idea they can't tie their dog at all. And I think it would help with a lot of people if, if he clarified that for the record.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Wiltshire.
Thank you, Chairman Ruble. Yes, we've tried to make that clear. This is not a resolution against tethering. I know that there, the one section that says an animal shall not be tethered over ten hours unless they have adequate shelter. A lot of people look at that saying they can't be tethered over ten hours. If you read that resolution, if they have adequate shelter, they can be tethered twenty-four seven. Now, obviously, we would hope that wouldn't happen. We would hope they would let the dog out occasionally and roam a little bit, but they can tether a dog twenty-four seven as long as they've got adequate shelter. And, and, and believe me, our, our Animal Control Director is not going to ride around looking for this. This is going to be something to where it will be reported and it will be investigated. They're, they're not looking for animals that are on tethers because this is not against tethers. It's just wanting to have humane tethering.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Ms. Lisa, please call the robe.
Michael Bell?
No.
Carl D. Bolden?
No.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
No.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
No.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Nineteen four.
Resolution passes nineteen to four. With that, I will yield back to Chairman Wiltshire. All right, next item is item number three, resolution number seventeen dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution to adopt a reappointment redistricting plan for Warren County, Tennessee. Commissioner England.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, this is the time that we do about a redistricting. We do this every ten years. You have your resolution in front of you, seventeen, number seventeen dash twenty twenty-one. Let me tell you, our committee's got together. I want to just, because I don't know that we'll meet again, but I want to thank some people that's on our committee and let you know who is on it. Myself, Tyrone Spartman, Philip Stout, Daniel Owens, Jimmy Haley, Chuck Cason in the back from their nine-one-one, and Susie Davenport from our Lexington Commission. We have worked hard on this. I want to take my hat off and say that if it hadn't been for them two right back there, Susie and Chuck, this wouldn't have went as quick as it had. We wished we'd have got it done quicker. Of course, COVID has kept us from getting a lot of things done. Susie would like to have this back years, I say years, a few months ago. But we've done everything that the comptroller and the book, that we have, we have done it. We've had a percentage to keep into. It's a, it's a mathematical problem that you, you take this math of forty thousand nine hundred and fifty-three people and you divide it into the twelve districts. Now, that's what you do and then you have to make it work. Chuck was able to get a, a program to go on the computer where he could shift things around and make things move. And that's what we've done. We feel like that we've come up with the best plan for this. And if you'll forgive me for not reading the entire resolution, I will just let you know that it still will be twelve districts with two commissioners per each district. That's what's on your resolution. I'm trying to make sure that I haven't missed nothing that we have talked about. But this is a, a, an item that, like I say, comes up every ten years and I feel like that we have done it as good as we can. We've got it that where, well, it will work for Warren County. With that being said, I put this in for a motion that we accepted.
We have a motion from Commissioner England. I have a second from Commissioner Owens. Anyone want to speak to that motion? Commissioner Stotts.
Chairman. Deborah Evans and I represent the sixth district. We want to move the area from Larry's Lane to Charles Creek and Smithville Highway back to the sixth district. From the eleventh, the way the grids are set, there are forty-four votes in this area. By doing so, this will still keep our five percent, which is legal. I am on the redistricting committee and we looked at this line and determined it would, would not be a problem. If you have any questions, you can be, can be verified by Mrs. Davenport.
Okay, we have a motion. I have a second from Commissioner Evans. To make that move, would that need another resolution wrote?
This passes, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, if this passes, we've already spent with legal and that'll just have to be some, that one change move as far as, and we have legal script. If this passes, I'll speak on that if, if you don't give me a.
Go ahead.
Well, when this passes, I'll speak again.
If it passes?
Yes, so if it does not, we'll move on.
All right, thank you. All right, we have a motion. Yeah, we have a motion and a second to make that move. Is there any other discussion on that motion? Mr. Chairman.
What is the reason for that?
Commissioner Stout or Commissioner England?
All right.
Yes.
We have a constable in that district that lives there and when we were drawing the lines, as I said, we had the program, we ran it. And when we found that these lines cut this one constable off, then we got back together as a committee and discussed it and our committee decided that it needed to be brought for the full commission to make this change. And there's only forty-four people in that, like Mr. Stout said, in this grid. There's forty-four people and we've run the numbers and it will fit, it does not bother our five percent and that's where we're at on it. Hope that helps you.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Owens.
This was brought up in our last meeting after the full resolution was passed to go to full court. Obviously, there was some concern and obviously, he stated why, but I would like Legal to step in on this just to confirm that this is legal.
Yes, Mr. Robert.
Redistricting is a complex process and the general rule of thumb in this particular instance is that no district line needs to be drawn for the benefit or the detriment of an individual. The statutes from which the authority for your district can come from Title V, Chapter One, and they delineate several motivations for the committee to consider when they're drawing the lines. Most importantly, that you have substantially equal population in each district, that the districts have to have a certain amount of compactness and contiguousness to their design. They shall not overlap. And then there is also case law that instructs on how these lines to be drawn. There's several canons of law that cover the fact that there should be one person, one vote, that there's a ten percent standard deviation that's been covered. These come from cases of Gravy Sanders or Champion versus Meyer. There's got to be minority representation considerations, racial gerrymandering. These kinds of things cannot be included or not be reasons for drawing a line. And I say all this to indicate that there is a lot of instruction about why a line should be drawn and why it should not be drawn. There is nothing in the statute that states that there's any authority to draw a line for the benefit or the detriment of an individual. As you get further and further away from what is directly permitted and authorized by statute, the decision to draw the line becomes more and more suspect and that in turn creates the possibility of litigation. the possibility of litigation. The challenge, of course, would be a chance for court action and the question would be whether or not the drawing of a line for the benefit of an individual or the detriment of an individual ended up creating a problem for another person. And if that person felt like they wanted to file a court, you could get into a situation where there's a, there's a legal action. So there's no perfect statute that says you can or cannot do it. However, as I indicated, it gets to the question, it's a gray area where there's a lot more potential for there to be court actions and for the chance for the judiciary to take away the drawing of the district lines from the legislative body, which is antithetical to the entire political process. So I know it's a long, roundabout answer, but there's, that's where it is and I'm happy to answer any questions to that if I'm unclear.
Kinda. Yes, Commissioner Ruble.
Mr. Bratcher, as far, and we spoke earlier on this, but as far as you have investigated, you have never seen that this had been brought to litigation, a situation like this, as far as you know, there's no precedent in place.
There is instruction in the comptroller's manual that states that one of the considerations for the drawing of the lines might be an incumbent's residence. The, the research I have done, it shows that I cannot find any case where that has been extended to other incumbents, not sitting county commissioners. That language is for you guys who draw the lines. It's not for any other elected official in any other capacity. What I could not find is there a case stating that it had been extended to permit it for those other folks.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
That was my concern is the fact that we could be opening up a Pandora's box here if we make concessions for one individual, that there's the possibility of another individual approaching and that we would have to continually be shifting lines, but that was my concern. Thank you.
One of the paramount constitutional principles is equal protection of the laws, that everybody gets the same treatment. So like I said, the rule of thumb being that you should not draw a line for the benefit or the detriment of an individual. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Commissioner England.
When we, we realized that we had this issue, we did have a meeting about it and talk about it. And one of the things that spearheaded this more than anything, and this is coming from me, is we have, we have a working constable in the safety for that area.
Right.
And we have a guy that is almost like having another deputy that we don't pay for. Now, mind you, he, he runs and delivers things for the lawyer's office and things of that nature, but Junior is out there and he, he is pushing this. And I know it sounds like we're just asking for the 44 people to be moved to make it to where it'll be in the sixth district, that's all. And I know that you can, I don't think, just my opinion, of course, you know, gray areas are gray areas, but I don't think it's ever been challenged.
Any other discussion?
Can you restate the motion?
Well, can you restate the motion, Commissioner Stout?
We want to move the area from Larry's Lane to Charles Creek and then O. Smithville Highway back to the sixth district from the 11th district. The way the grids are set, there are 44 votes in this area. By doing this, it will, it will keep the redistricting, it will keep the, the 5% and will, and will be legal.
Thank you. That was the motion. Does everybody understand the motion? Yeah, this is an amendment to the original motion. Does anybody understand that? Yes, Commissioner Evans.
I just want to clarify, when we vote, we're voting on the amended resolution. Thank you.
Susie, would you want to speak on this?
I think that pretty well covered everything. We drew our lines, we did not take anybody to account as to where they were other than the 24 folks who are sitting up there. The numbers are within the required parameters. I think that one census block will not take us out of the lines. It's up to y'all if you choose to do so or not.
Thank you. All right, any other discussion on the amendment? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Call the roll, please, Lisa.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
No.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
No.
Casey Owens?
No.
Kristy Ross?
No.
Scott Ruble?
No.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
No.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote?
All right, motion passes, seventeen yes, six no. Now, we're back on the original motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner England.
Since we have made this change, I have got the new maps and the new legal description and I would request that we take a, if you want to call it a five-minute recess or cease and let me pass these out and give us about five or six minutes and then reconvene back to vote on this, that way everybody sees the right map. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. We'll take a.
Can't wait. I'll do it, okay, I'll do it in form of motion. How about, let's do, keep things going, about 10 minutes.
All right, we have a motion for a 10-minute recess. Second from Commissioner Savage. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All right, I'll call the meeting back to order and we're back on the, the motion and I believe there was some more discussion, possibly. Commissioner England, is there any other discussion before we go on and vote?
Chairman, I, or, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I have passed out all the papers and I hope somebody's had to look at it. If you have any questions, if I can't answer it, we'll get Ms. Trisons or Ms. Davenport to answer.
Commissioner Hill.
I would like to make a note that I did make a request as far as Mount Zion area being included into the ninth district, but as you can tell by looking at the map, the ninth district is growing with leaps and bounds and they carved quite a bit out of the ninth district and give it to a number of different districts just because it's growing so much. So I did make that request. I want it to be known that I made that request, but nothing can be done just because we did have to carve so much out of other areas.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, if not, we will vote. We'll do a roll call vote on this. This is on the amended resolution. Well, the resolution after it has been amended. All right, Lisa.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
No.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
No.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
No.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Motion passes, nineteen yes, six no.
All right, I'll call the meeting back to order and we're back on the, the motion. And I believe there was some more discussion, possibly Commissioner England, is there any other discussion before we go on and vote?
Mr. Chairman, I, or excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I have passed out all the papers and I hope somebody's had to look at it. If you have any questions, if I can't answer it, we'll get Ms. Tryson's or Ms. Davenport's answer.
Commissioner Hilton.
I would like to make a note that I did make a request as far as Mount Zion area being included into the 9th District, but as you can tell by looking at the map, the 9th District is growing with leaps and bounds and they carved quite a bit out of the 9th District and give it to a number of different districts just because it's growing so much. So I did make that request. I want it to be known that I made that request, but nothing can be done just because we did have to carve so much out of other areas.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, if not, we will vote. We'll do a roll call vote on this. This is on the amended resolution. Well, the resolution after it has been amended. All right, Lisa.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden? Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
No.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Sparkman?
No.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
No.
Blaine Wilcher?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 19 yes, 3 no.
Motion passes 19 yes, 3 no. Next item is item number five. Amendment GF-FY-2120.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Next item is item number four, Resolution Number 18-2021, a resolution to adopt a redistricting plan for Warren County, Tennessee Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now that we have adopted this, we have to do this for the school board and we failed to get this in our packet we thought was in the packet, so it should have been laid on your desk tonight to look at it. This was failed to put in your packet and we apologize for that. And real quick, while you're thinking about that, I want you to know that we have six school board districts. And so, number one district will consist of county commission districts two and three. The second district will consist of county commissioner districts one and six. The third district of the school board will consist of county commission districts four and five. District four of the school board will be made up of county commissioners in the districts seven and eight. School board district number five will be made up of the county commission districts nine and 10. And the school board district number six will be made up of the county commission districts 11 and 12. Ms. Suzy's researched that. It's not going to affect none of the ones that are in there. It's just we have to do this and pass this on to the school board and I so move.
With a motion from Commissioner England, second from Commissioner Hennessy, anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next, we're on item number five, GF-FY-21-slash-22-11. Director Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a budget amendment for the general fund to accept grant revenues and to appropriate funds for those grants for the Warren County archives.
Motion to accept.
Motion from Commissioner Hennessy, second from Commissioner Stout. Anyone want to speak to that motion? Call the roll, please, Lisa.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Sparkman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wilcher?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 22 yes.
Motion passes 22 yes. Next item is item number six, Amendment GP-FY-2122-3. Director Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an amendment for the general purpose school fund in order to appropriate additional funds to purchase the 48 dumpsters in order to replace all the existing open top dumpsters at each of the schools within the county. The current dumpsters.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Bell, second from Commissioner Brown. You've done such a good job, Justin, they jumped right in there. Anyone want to speak to that motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hilton.
Why does the dumpsters have to be replaced?
The open top dumpsters allow rainwater in and it's a T-deck. T-deck's starting to get on to both schools and the sanitation department for those open top dumpsters as they collect water. Then the leakage runs out and that's a, could get us in trouble with T-deck.
And what's going to happen to the 48 dump, or the replacement dumpsters?
They have tops.
Do what?
They have tops on them. Oh, the ones we currently have, they'll be sold for scrap.
Anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Ruble.
To clarify, this is not the total cost of the dumpsters. This is an increased cost. We appropriated the funding for that earlier and the costs have skyrocketed. So this is an increase. This is not the total cost for the dumpsters.
Thank you. No other comments or questions? Lisa, call the roll, please.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Sparkman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wilcher?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 22 yes.
Motion passes 22 yes. Next item is item number seven, Amendment GP-FY-2122-4. Director Cotton.
This is another amendment for the general purpose school system to correctly establish the estimated revenues for the state revenue sharing telecommunication funds.
Motion from Commissioner Stout, second from Commissioner Hillis. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, call the roll, please, Lisa.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Sparkman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wilcher?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 22 yes.
Motion passes 22 yes. Next item is item 8A, COVID-19 policy. Commissioner Hilton.
I move that we adopt the proposal B, COVID-19 policy.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hilton. That was second from Commissioner Sparkman. Anyone want to speak to that?
May I speak to that?
Yes, you may, Commissioner Hilton.
Okay, all right. As I said before, you've got two COVID policies in front of you. Proposal B, which is the one that I made the motion for, includes 80 hours for the paid leave. And the reason that I went ahead and pushed forth the proposal B is because that's what come out of committee. It got voted three to two to include that 80 hours. You have two policies in front of you. You've got the normal policy that was brought before us and the only difference in proposal A, or the first one and proposal B, is that 80 hours addition. If you'll notice throughout the packet, again, as I said in my report, this is the Tennessee Department of Health, basically, and Mr. Britton is here and he can speak to it if I do a poor job. Basically, what we're looking at here is the standard policy from the Department of Health. As that policy changes, because it's evolved and you can see here on this document, it's evolved, I don't know, four different rev levels here. As it changes, our policy will there change as well. So we won't have to revisit this if Tennessee Department of Health updates their policy. This is also included. I know there was some concerns regarding EMS and the Sheriff's Department. Anybody that basically deals in healthcare personnel, if you'll flip on over a few pages, there is a specific policy for them as well. Mr. Denny is here tonight and he was in our meeting. He reviewed this. There was some discussion made and basically, he feels that he can abide with this policy and basically already has been. So if there's any questions regarding this, be glad to answer them. Of course, we've got the people here to answer as well.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lee.
I just wanted to be noted, now this is for the fiscal year. This will end, this 80 hours that we're going to help, that we may help our, the people work for the county, will end June 30th, correct? And then we'll have to revisit it at that time?
As it was brought up in our meeting, I believe that was what your intent was, is basically this would end at the end of our fiscal year. Justin Cotton was there to basically agree with that, that if we wanted to extend it past this, it would, we would have to revote on another 80 hours. So basically, the 80 hours that is proposed in this presentation, and it may need to be spelled out a little clearer, but the purpose and intent was that it would be for this fiscal year and it would end whenever our fiscal budget was over.
Commissioner Brown.
On this policy here, Mr. Hilton, it states that, where you've got your six revisions here, that the update to the January 1st, 2021 policy previously approved by the Warren County, is it, well, it's stated here somewhere that we were going to be reviewing this quarterly. So on a quarterly basis is when you could make the revisions. Is that correct?
Yeah. Can we get Mr. Britton to speak on this?
Be glad to. The provisions in here is that this, this commission can review it on a quarterly basis if need be. The reason we tried to word the language the way we did is so that we're not coming back every three months and revisiting this policy. And that's simply by doing it, by adopting the Tennessee Department of Health guidelines that's attached to it, so that as those change, it would be an automatic rollover. And then if there was, conditions change and COVID infection rates and that sort of thing, that would warrant us to come back to review it, we would be able to do that on a quarterly basis. Did I answer the question?
I felt like the question was, does it end on June the?
June the 30th. June the 30th, 2022 is what we discussed in the committee meeting of when it would end.
Is that in this proposal?
It probably needs to be added to it as far as that date, but that was the discussion we had that night.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Savage.
In the minutes, Commissioner Lee made a motion to amend the previous motion by adding the 80 hours COVID sickly back until June 30th, 2022, second by Commissioner Glenn.
The main thrust here was to try to make a policy that covered us from a liability perspective that was reviewable and only editable as the Tennessee Department of Health changed the guidelines, is what we were trying to do here.
Commissioner Lee.
And my main intention, ladies and gentlemen of the court, I wish we could say tonight that COVID was over, but we really can't. And I'm hoping that this would cover our workers for six more months or till the fiscal year end and hope and pray that at that time, we won't have to worry about this. And that's my intent.
Commissioner Bell.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to amend the proposal B to remove the 80 hours of pay and accept the COVID without the 80 hours.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the proposal B of this COVID policy, correct?
Remove the 80 hours.
Going back to the original?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Anyone want to speak to that? Commissioner Hennessy.
We've been down this rabbit hole before and we went, it's like on a merry-go-round. There may be a consideration and a compromise here. If we could look at the 80, perhaps change that to 40, that would be a compromise for everybody because we have done this and done this and done this. And every time this is brought up, this has been the same talking point. So that's a consideration. Thank you for your time.
Commissioner Hilton.
So in committee, I did vote against the 80 hours. Of course, it come on to, to the commission with that because it passed a total committee. Personally, our employees get a day per month and so they accumulate 12 days per year, which 12 days of sick days to me seems, seems fair and it seems like a standard across a lot of sectors. By adding these 80 hours, basically what we're doing for our employees, which is really nice, we're giving them 22 sick days by adding the additional 80 hours. And I just personally think that that's a little extreme, especially whenever you add on their vacation. On top of that, you're basically looking at a senior employee getting nearly a month and a half off. So I feel like 22 days of sick days is a little extreme. 12 days of sick days seems more rational. That's what our standard policy is, a day per, a per month that you're here, you accumulate, those can rollover. So that's the reason I voted against of it in the committee and that's the reason I'm going to vote against the 80 hours here tonight.
If I may clarify one point, they're not usable sick days. They're only usable in a positive test for COVID and a condition that would keep them out of work. So it's not a cross-the-board, everybody's getting 80 hours of pay added on to their benefit package. So there are, there are some stipulations that would have to come into effect before they would be able to use that additional benefit.
Yes, Executive Haley.
I do want to clarify that every elected official, including Ms. Scott, and every director, including Mr. Cotton and all the others, every single one of them wanted the 80 hours for protecting. If they're going to send an employee home, particularly if it's a new employee who hasn't built up any days, or an employee has children who have already been out sick, and then suddenly they're thrust into a COVID situation where they're having to be quarantined or out, then this was the only fair thing to do for our employees. Since we provide so few benefits, this would be one thing to protect our employees and give them at least something to not be fearful of in case they do get this terrible disease. And we still have people out being sick and quarantined on this, by the way.
Commissioner Bolden.
Mr. Chairman, I was going to try not to say anything, but I'm going to rebut what he said. I talked to one director, an elected official, that told me she didn't care one way or the other. And I might, I did say she, but anyway, she didn't say one way or the, she didn't care one way or the other, but she wanted everybody just to be on the same basis. And she said, they didn't need it. They had their sick days. They roll them over, they build them up. They could even share them with the new HR policy, right? Somebody can share. I talked to one guy that's elected director now. When he worked here, he's got 122 days sick days built up right now, but he's an elected official now. So I think they got the 12 days to cover the sickness. And this person did say this, though, that they didn't like the directors sending people home and saying they was working from home to get the sick days in.
Yes, Commissioner Evans.
Really sure who I'm directing this question to, but if we take the 80 hours away and you have someone who doesn't have many sick hours, is it possible, I know people do this, they give their kids Tylenol and send them to school sick. They take Tylenol and go to work sick. And before COVID, we probably all did that. However, now, we don't, we're very proactive against doing that. If these, I just know when we were young raising our children, if we, and it actually did happen to us, where we used all of our sick time we had. I had cancer, my husband had heart disease. Are we, are we creating a situation where people will come to work with COVID and spread it? That, I don't really, like I said, I don't know who I'm addressing it to, but it's, it's a point of concern.
Commissioner Glenn.
Hey, these 80 hours, listen, there may be some employees that's here just for one year. Okay, they get COVID, they're gone. They got a lot of small kids. They're expecting us to help them and we should. They serve our county and they meet people every day, around them every day. And I don't know why we can't do this. This is a good thing. And they, they're going to abuse it, always will. Somebody going to abuse it somewhere, but we hope not. And we, and we got policies in place, like David says, that we should be able to stop it now.
Yes, Commissioner Owens.
I spoke to Commissioner Savage and Commissioner Hilton before about the school policy where we can wear a mask if we've been in close contact and come back to work. Did y'all consider that when y'all were discussing this policy at all?
Commissioner Hilton.
I'll actually, I'd I'll actually, I know it's directed toward us, and I'll direct that more toward Davy, but he's the, he's the expert.
First of all, I do not like the term expert on anything, but. The, the Tennessee Department of Health guidelines does address that. So it wasn't addressed specifically in our discussion at the committee meeting, but it is in the guidance that you have in front of you of whether or not you've had COVID before, whether or not you've been vaccinated. All of those conditions are clearly spelled out in attachment one. And we've been over that with the department managers and directors, and they say it's clearly understandable to them of how to address that situation. So we did not get into masks with children at school strictly of how this would affect our employee population here within the county operations. The school system has separate policy of how they handle their situations, and we did not try to address that.
I was just thinking that it would cut down if, with close contact, because you know, a lot of times you never actually come down with COVID if you've been in close contact. There's times like that. And I was just thinking, if you had the option to come to work and wear a mask, that that may be an option to cut down on the eighty hours. But I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
It does, it does allow you to do that today in cases where you've been vaccinated and you're positive you can wear a mask and come to work. That's in the Tennessee Department of Health guidelines today. If you've seen TV, this whole thing is up in the air of what's coming. And, you know, we may be a week away before courts make a decision, and we're just sitting here talking about something else. But today, in the crystal ball that we have, following the Tennessee Department of Health guidelines is the easiest and most effective way for us to manage. And it gives the managers all the authority in the world to address people who's abusing the system.
Commissioner, Commissioner Evans.
I, I do have another question. Earlier, you stated the eighty hours would only be if they had a positive COVID case that required them to stay home. Is that how I under, did I understand that correctly?
Well, it did say that because within the Tennessee Department of Health guidelines, it says you can be a positive, and if you've been vaccinated, you can come to work and wear a mask. So they would not be entitled to eighty hours of pay in that, in that situation.
Any other discussion? All right, if not, we're going to vote on the amendment. We're taking the eighty hours out and going back to the original COVID policy. Everybody understand?
Clarification.
Yes.
What we're voting on specifically, we're not voting on the entire policy. We're just taking, whether we take eighty hours out or not, and then we'll have to vote again to, for the entire policy, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Call the roll, please, Lisa.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
No.
David Dunlap.
No.
Randy England.
Yes.
Deborah Evans.
No.
Steve Glenn.
No.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Robert Hennessy.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
No.
Ron Lee.
No.
Gary Martin.
No.
Daniel Owens.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
No.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Tyrone Sparkman.
Yes.
Joseph Stotts.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Fourteen yes, eight no.
Motion passes fourteen to eight. Now we're back on to the original motion for the COVID-19 policy without eighty hours pay. We're, we're back on the original motion, which was to adopt the COVID-19 policy, and we, which has been amended without the eighty hours pay. Yes. Call the roll, please.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
David Dunlap.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Deborah Evans.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Robert Hennessy.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
No.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Daniel Owens.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Tyrone Sparkman.
Yes.
Joseph Stotts.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor. Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Twenty-one yes, one no.
Motion passes. Next item is item A, approval of notaries. We have a motion from Commissioner Hilton, second from Commissioner Lee. Anyone want to speak to that? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Announcements? Thank you. Thank you. Read those, please, Ms. Lisa.
Jennifer Meredith, Jennifer Robbins, Jose M. Rodriguez, Jennifer M. Guy, Diane Sullins, Terry Lee King Jr., Courtney Breedlove, Leah Gibbs, Raphael Garza D. Rodriguez, Letitia Watson, and Mackenzie Jacobs.
Thank you. Real quick, Executive Haley, I will, I will announce you've got a, an AirMed pamphlet there. I didn't know if you was going to announce that or not, but we have a special rate. It's, it's fifty dollars a year through the county for us to do that. So it's just something that we passed out there. It's, to me, it's, it's a good thing. Family, yes. And household family, so, Executive Haley.
It already offers it, so it's been offered to you all before. Just want to make sure that it's entered into the record that prior to this county commission meeting, we did have a public comment section for the redistricting. So for the community and any commissioners that had input or questions, the redistricting committee or to review the maps, either on the, the screen or the physical maps that we're laying. But that needs to be a matter of our record for tonight as well, that that was done.
Okay.
And then one more thing, it was sent out as an email, but Thanksgiving is upon us, and First Presbyterian Church, in partnership with quite a few folks, does offer a Thanksgiving meal. And so if anybody is interested or has a family member or friend or an elderly or shut-in that might be interested, it's going to be pickup only this year, no delivery. But you can call First Presbyterian Church at four seven three twenty-six ninety before Monday of next week and reserve a meal for anyone that might need it.
If there's no other announcements, I've got one announcement before you leave. If you would, please, everybody come up here. Thanks to Randy and his students at TCAT. I wanted to do something for everybody, including Executive Haley. Everybody come up and get a license plate for your district, and I would like to get a picture, if possible, of everybody with their plate. Colley had to sneak his out of here. So after we adjourn, please come up here and get your plate.
And I'd like for it to be known that Blaine paid for it all.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Taylor. Got a motion to adjourn. Got a second from Commissioner Stout. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?